Or you're on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
You're trying to wipe me out, but I'm still.
Go ahead. Debbie just didn't get me that wipeout quick enough. With that, I'm going to move on to the public hearing, text amendment, case number 2017-16, section 2.308, signs to clarify the requirements of governing signs. Opening the hearing on that. Staff input.
All right, thank you Chair, Sankster and Planning Commission. We are deeming this meeting Signs 3.0, third time back, sorry guys. So basically what we did here, bringing back the text that, well, some of you saw a couple times, we do have a couple of new commissioners since those meetings, so I know that, let me apologize, the packet was giant. There was a ton of information, I apologize, but I felt like it was important because of the historical context, so at least had the information you could get to look back on. That being said, I understand that there may be some questions, and I will do my best to answer those semi-accurately, and Nate will jump in and correct me when I'm wrong. So essentially, we came to you guys back in August of 2017, had a public hearing on signs, received some testimony, had a draft, held the hearing forward, carried it forward to September to allow more testimony, because there was a lot of talking and a lot of things happening. And in September, ultimately closed the public hearing with the understanding that we were going to go back and do some work based on direction y'all had given us on some kind of specific issues. So the staff report, or the memo that I sent to you guys, has basically a table in it that kind of tried to drill down into those specific issues. And the direction that was given, we've done our best to incorporate that into the language as proposed. The memo doesn't talk a lot about the public testimony received, I see we've got a couple folks that are going to testify tonight as well. I'm assuming testimony will be somewhat consistent with what was before, so Jonathan will be able to speak for himself ultimately.
[laughing]
But we did receive testimony from business owners regarding a lot of varying issues, one of which being electronic message centers. We are looking at changing those standards. So, with that being said, we'll kind of walk through the chart, and then as you guys have questions, you can jump in, interrupt me, and feel free, I'm pretty laid back. And then the other thing is, we wanted to make sure with Michael not being here, he sent an email that I believe all of you guys got, and then we got one additional email that I saw Debbie got sent out, and I hope you guys all saw that, that were sent in. What is it, the manager Jersey Mikes? Or maybe the owner? Had sent some information regarding window signs, and Michael had sent some information and some questions. So if there's any things on those emails you have questions on, I'd be happy to address them. But, without further ado.
Yeah.
So, in the chart, the first thing on our list, the category if you will, was the amortization and the non-conforming language. In the development code as it currently sits today, basically there was a lot, there's a lot of discussion about an amortization timeframe, a compliance date of 1997 for non-conforming signs. There's been a lot of talk about that, there was a whole program after the sign code was adopted way back in the mid-'90s about bringing signs into compliance, making them shorter, making them smaller, doing a bunch of stuff. Basically, that language is out of date. So what we've done is the language has been updated, and the last time we were here, I had kind of taken maybe a stab at updating that language, and my pen might have been too red, so Shannon kind of corrected me and brought it back into where it needs to be. So what's in front of you tonight, it is vetted and changed by our city attorney to basically put into place the fact that we're saying essentially, if I can drill it down, that if there's a sign that's coming in for a permit, we're going to make sure your property's in compliance before we're issuing you signed permits. So it essentially says, hey, signs need to be brought into compliance. It already said that before, but it just kind of clarifies it, and it eliminates that specific timeframe, because the grace period is long since passed. So that was kind of the first one. The second one, election signs. You know, one of the biggest reasons we came back in August was because of the Gilbert-Reed Supreme Court decision, and specifically the content neutrality piece of signage. And so, from a very general perspective, categories are kind of a no-no based upon that Supreme Court decision. So real estate and election signs, which are the two things in the list right now, we essentially needed to eliminate those. And we came to you guys in September asking, what should we do with this, how do we want to handle it? And ultimately, the direction that was given was to go ahead and eliminate the category, and essentially, we're giving a free-for-all for portable and temporary signs during the time 45 days prior and seven days after a governmental election. Now, obviously, the intent there is hopefully people utilize that and recognize, oh, that's to, you know, support our candidates, but the reality is, is that if an entrepreneurial business owner wants to put out a bunch of signs during elections for special sales and advertising, the code will now allow that officially, whereas before it did not. And that's specifically to be content neutral with how we're applying the standards. And I think the concern that was raised before is we could say, hey, not at all, and then it would essentially eliminate the ability for folks to support multiple candidates anytime we have an election. They might be able to support just one, because they are limited to one sign essentially. So that's what the language in front of you does, it basically gives a open window of opportunity for temporary and portable sign displays around the time of governmental elections. The 45 and 7 days, just so you know, that language is always exist, well, hasn't always, it's existed in our code for a very long time, because we've had a specific election sign category, and so what we did is essentially eliminate the category, but keep the standards so that it could be applied to any sign. The real estate signs, we approach that in a similar way. As staff, we still have some pause with it, and it's a little bit frustrating, but feel that it is appropriate based on the categorical, you know, getting rid of those category-driven definitions, and so our kind of workaround, because one of the things is right now residential properties, you know, they can have a freestanding or a small sign, six square feet is what it talks about for residential uses, and historically, when we had a real estate category, it allowed six square feet for residences and 16 square feet for commercial or industrial uses, for advertising the for-sale lease of a property. And so what we've done is we've essentially created, also in answering some of the concerns expressed when we met with Chamber, to allow some additional signage for grand opening events and things like that. What we're doing with real estate signs while it is not specifically addressing real estate signs, because we can't, because it's category, but our creative workaround is to allow for a permit for one oversized portable sign per property, so that if a property owner along River Road or in the commercial core wants to advertise their property for sale, lease, or rent, they would be able to do so either in their overall just normal sign allowances that they have, or if they want to get, like what we generally see, the larger real estate sign for the commercial use, they could, now with this language, they will be able to obtain a permit and be able to renew that permit in order to make that work for them. Window signs was the next thing on our list. Window signs previously haven't, have not been regulated by the Kaiser Development Code. It came out of our meetings that there was some opinion that it would be a good thing to look at regulating those. Obviously, we got some comments from Commissioner De Bossi in the email about this specific issue, as well as the email from the Jersey Mikes folks. The direction given in September was to keep the language as it was proposed in August, and that was that we would limit the amount of window coverage to 50% of the glass area. So that was something that we've kept, and the language is pretty straightforward and basic on that one. The portable and the temporary signs, you know, the language we had taken, or that we have currently said portable signs are one every 50 feet, and one per lot, and 120-day time limit, and that it didn't include wind feather signs. Temporary signs included the wind feather signs, and it was one per lot and 120-day time limit, and I explained to you guys at length about how temporary signs kind of were, it was kind of a weird deal, because temporary generally, we think temporary, it's a limited timeframe. Portable is a function of the sign structure, but when the sign code was rewritten back in, I don't remember Nate, 2007 or something? Kind of some things got slid into temporary signs at the last minute, specifically for the wind feather flags, because that was something that people wanted to allow. And so the language we're proposing is basically clarifying the two definitions to make frankly more sense, and what the language is ending up with is a 25-foot separation of signs, which was direction given by Planning Commission. We had initially proposed a 10-foot separation, and limited to one per business or storefront. And the big difference with a portable sign is we're not going to have a time limit anymore as the language is written. So we're saying each business can have one portable sign for as long as they want, as long as it meets those confines of a portable sign. And then, but temporary signs, the banners essentially, we are redefining what a temporary sign is to include banners and other signs attached to a building, and keeping those limited to the 120 days. So that's what we're proposing with that. Electronic message centers, everybody's favorite thing to talk about. So historically, the city of Kaiser did not allow electronic message centers at all. There was a handful, I think three, time and temperature signs, which were specifically allowed in the old code, but only time and temperature signs. So many years back, the city created a process to have electronic message centers. And in the city of Kaiser, electronic message centers are able to be obtained going through a conditional use process, there's some very specific design standards for them. It was a hard fought battle way back in the day to allow them. And one of the things after we allowed them, we had some pretty significant limitations to how often they could be changed, the messages. And so we are proposing to modify what that standard is. We were one change every 15 minutes, once every 24 hours for like the schools and stuff, and we are proposing to change the EMC standards to allow a change every 60 seconds. And we're also allowing the change that currently an electronic message center is only allowed as a freestanding sign, so we're also proposing that they be allowed as a wall sign. I actually had to encourage somebody to request a refund for a conditional use permit just like this last week, because they were trying to convert a reader board on one of our grade schools to an electronic message center, and we cannot process that currently. That was completely coincidental, but I told the gentleman, well, let me refund your money, but I'm actually going to go to Planning Commission later this month, and depending on what happens, we may be changing our rules to allow this, so I'll keep you posted. So that's the other change with the EMCs. And then the other kind of hanging out issue there was the illumination standards. If you remember, we currently regulate our illumination by knits, and there's a consideration to change that to foot candles. A lot of cities have started doing it, Salem has some proposed language to change, and when the last time we were with you guys, we basically got the direction, yeah, we think it's a good idea to be consistent with what Salem does. Unfortunately, Salem has still not adopted anything. So we're still kind of in the same spot, but my hope was, and Shannon might get angry with me, but my hope was that if you choose to send a recommendation to council, that maybe that recommendation can have that direction given to staff, to simply say, let's go ahead and mirror Salem, you know, if that's resolved by the time it goes to council. You know, essentially, I think I told you guys before, we've not really had issues with signs being too bright. When they're too bright, we call the owner, we say, hey, we're getting complaints about your sign being too bright. We require them to provide us with information from the manufacturers that talk about the brightness, they're supposed to be equipped with auto dimming functions, and generally speaking, we've had no real issues with that. The one thing I will say is that there was a lot of testimony about the EMCs, and specifically about frequency of change. We had a meeting with the Chamber about this issue as well, and you know, everybody kind of agreed, the once every 15 minutes, the once every 24 hours was just not doable and not fair. So you know, we landed at the once every 60 seconds as a staff, Planning Commission supported that back in September, and kind of said, let's take it and send that on and let council decide that ultimately. The one thing that I do want to make sure that we're aware of is, you know, a lot of the testimony we received was regarding whether or not it's safer or not safe for the eight seconds versus the 60 seconds, and I want to make sure that you guys know as staff, we're not approaching the frequency of change from us. It's not about a safety issue in our opinion, it really is about that aesthetic issue and that policy issue of what you all want to see in the city. And the other thing, I know we had some testimony about national standards, and I tried to clarify this before, when you get into sign codes, it is really crazy. I mean, like literally, like literally, this is just some of the documents and whatnot that we've gone through, looking at the other sign codes and the national, kind of the national standards by International Sign Council, and the United States Sign Council. And you know, there's no really one standard for EMCs. You've got places like Vegas and Times Square that have full-on video boards and, you know, full animations and everything else. Salem has an eight-second standard for much of their commercial zones, but not all of them. The one thing that's a little different that I would want to point out between Salem and Kaiser is Salem's sign code ties all the signage types to the underlying zoning designations. We tie our sign code to the property uses. So we basically have commercial uses, non-commercial uses. It's a lot simpler to implement for us, but in Salem, you know, there's no EMCs allowed at all in the historic district, none at all in a residential district. And actually, their frequency of change, and I believe it's the commercial office use, the commercial neighborhood use, and the neighborhood center mixed uses, and the Fairview mixed use, they only allow the frequency of change once every hour. And as I said, they have a proposed sign amendment on the books, that's still the language moving, if it moves forward, that's still the language they're proposing. So that is the one thing that I kind of wanted to make sure that you as decision-makers understood is there really isn't an adopted, set and sewn standard, it's across the board. There's a lot of studies that have been done, federal highway administrations have done studies, you know, different folks have done studies based on how much time it takes to look at a sign, read it, understand it, comprehend it, and also distracted driving, you know, with the new texting laws and whatnot, there's been a lot of studies done about distracted driving, and essentially, we shouldn't be looking away from our road more than three to four seconds is kind of the number that we always hear. So, but we just wanted to clarify that, because I know sometimes people get real caught up on the frequency of change being a safety issue. Staff is not maintaining that that's the case, I think there's too many different studies out there. What we are kind of proposing, we feel it's allowing a lot of messages to be displayed, and it's given a lot more than what we currently have right now, which we recognize is limiting to our businesses who want to put those types of signs up. So, the last two, secondary frontage, super easy, we allow secondary frontage signs in integrated centers. We didn't allow it at standalone businesses, I think frankly, it was kind of an oversight, and so we want to make that fair. So it's just adding the exact same language to the other businesses as well. And then the last category is the grand opening or special occasion permit, kind of a new category to give people the ability to have grand opening signage. And we basically have two permits that we're looking to allow. Shannon did point out, I had a little bit of a typo, because when I thought of or, I thought of or, and when he thought of or, he thought of or in a lawyer-y way.
[laughing]
So, the language, the language that's proposed, he said to me, it would be read that you could only get one or the other, but we just mean there's two different types. So if a business is having a grand opening, and they want to do their banners and portable signs, and go crazy for two weeks, and pay the permit fee, and do all of that, we're saying, yes, you can go ahead and do that and get that permit, and you still could have a permit to have your real estate or other oversized portable sign at the same time. We're not saying they have to choose between the two permits, the two permits are very different, but they could be on the same property at once. The difference being, the grand opening slash special occasion is limited to two weeks, you can get two of them in a calendar year, and there has to be a 30-day timeframe between the two. Whew, okay. I think that's it, that gets us through the chart at least. With that, ask away the questions.
Commissioners.
We'll get it.
I have a couple.
We'll get it here in a second.
As far as the light measurement?
Yes.
And Shane, you and I talked about this recently, and there's two different pieces of equipment, one's pretty generic and one's very expensive, and we don't have either. But...
Yes.
There must be some parity between whether it's knits or the other one, at some point they're, you know, their 10 is my eight or 12, you know, there's a crossover there. So, I don't know that we really need to get involved with that stuff, but as long as we show they have parity, but then leave it up to the site owner, developer, whatever, to prove which one they're using, and we don't really care which one, as long as we set a kind of a ceiling to brightness.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't know whether everybody's going to use knits or, but we don't need to wait for somebody else to tell us how we're going to operate in our city. And if we put the responsibility on the developer and/or property owner to show that their illuminated sign meets either this standard or this standard, we get to the same place without having to screw around with it.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Anybody else? I want to get Jonathan up here, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Jonathan, would you like to come on up?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jonathan Thompson, and I am the Government Affairs Committee Chair for the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce. I think Nate just schedules these sign code things periodically because he misses me and he, so anyway. We've talked a lot about this issue in the past, so I won't dwell on it for too long tonight, but first, I want to say that we appreciate that the sign code is getting simpler. Simpler is good, content neutral in our opinion is good, so we don't have folks making judgments based on what the sign says. And also, we really like how election signs are treated. When this first came up, we had several candidates at all levels of office, elected and not, write in with concerns, and I think that what staff and you have hit on with election signs is probably the sweet spot, and I think it will allow folks to get their message out, but at the same time, you know, not allow folks to start campaigning for years before an election. The one thing I do want to add to Shane's point and about enterprising folks putting up advertising, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they would still need the property owner's permission. So if I'm a, if I want to go advertise, you know, my business, I can't just go put up signs everywhere around Kaiser because it's election season. They would still need the property owner's permission, and, you know, and at my business, I'm not going to let somebody advertise, you know, just because it's election season. So, I think, so I'm not concerned about that point, but there are a couple of items which, you know, we've talked about in the past, which still raise some concerns for us. The first is dealing with electronic message centers. We really like that the proposal comes off the current requirement. We've had feedback from Chamber members and also from groups like the Fire District about the fact that, you know, they want to be able to change those more often, and the Fire District wants to be able, I mean, they're at 24 hours right now, and they'd obviously like to change that sign more often. But we'd like to see the proposal dropped even further. We think the eight seconds is reasonable. I talked in the past, I did some driving up and down River Road with an eight-second stopwatch, and you make it pretty far down River Road in eight seconds, so I don't know that you'd see a lot of changes. The, and I don't, you know, and we don't see it as, you know, we're turning River Road into the Vegas Strip, but then after our community conversation, maybe somebody wants to see River Road turn into the Vegas, I don't know, so. But, the other thing is, from a more practical standpoint, changing it more frequently allows folks to put up public messages, allows businesses to put up public messages. We saw, especially last summer when the council was debating the police fee, that, you know, people up and down River Road changed their non-static message signs, they were out there with the pole and the suction cup to put up things with city messages, and, you know, just with I as a business owner, if I were to have one of these signs, it would make a lot more sense to me if I could advertise things like that, but I wouldn't have to leave it up for an hour or anything, I could also run my own messages more frequently as well. So, the Kaiser Chamber would like to see the current proposal come down to eight seconds on the electronic message centers. The second piece that we're struggling with is the window signs. We think this is kind of an overreach in this proposal. Many of these coverings were put up to cover storage rooms and offices, I think you have an email from Jersey Mikes in there that talk about the fact that they're covering up a storage room and some piping along the lines. And in at least two cases I'm aware of, business owners have put up these window coverings to block offices that have safes in it, so I think there are, is a legitimate safety concern to not be, have your safe showing outside as people walk by. And then again, many of these coverings are already up, and some have gone up rather recently, I mean, are we going to require business owners who have these already to take them down? Because in some cases, they just paid quite a bit of money to put them up, and we don't think you should be, we should make them take them down again. So, in summary, we appreciate city staff reaching out and working with the Chamber on this, I think we've come a long way, like I said, we're still concerned about the electronic message centers and the window coverings, but this proposal comes a long way from where we were. Like I said, we just, we think if you can tidy up those couple things, that we'll be there, so. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you have more questions? Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, did quite a bit of homework trying to prepare myself for this, and, you know, going back and looking at the testimony from Jonathan Thompson in the August and September meetings, and Carlos Panetta, and Carlos Soto, and the gentleman from Kaiser Mart, and all these other various testimonies we've had, and then listening to a lot of the discussion, I think it's been very thoughtful, and frankly, really easy to kind of go back and follow the discussion, so very commendable to staff for sort of laying it out in a manner that was easily digestible for somebody coming in and needing to do some updating. So just a couple thoughts I'd like to share, in terms of, I know one of the things that was being wrestled over, I think it was either by Commissioner Duran or Commissioner Jakes, was the frequency of the elections, and so a thought that I had was, the Secretary of State's office really only designates four times a year for elections, second Tuesday in March, third Tuesday in May, third Tuesday in September, and the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, that's not confusing. So maybe those might be clarifying language opportunities for this particular timeframe, I don't know if that's necessary or not. So that way, you know, we're not saying, oh, the school board's having elections, so let's go this route, or, you know, the city council is electing this, let's go this, you know, maybe clarifying and tying it specifically to what the Oregon Secretary of State has. So that was my thought on the election signs. In terms of the windows, you know, the language here says 50% of the surface area for the window in which they are plan putting it on, what I heard tonight was 50% of the total surface, so is that the cumulative surface of all of their windows, so if they have four, they can cover two, I don't know. So that was a little bit sort of confusing on that particular piece. In terms of the EMCs, you know, I tend to always look at opportunities for public-private partnership, and I know, having been intimately involved with both the parks and police fee process, that one of the biggest feedbacks in my other board was the community response in terms of being able to see those signs and seeing that opportunity, and again, at 15 minutes, that was a cost for the business owners, and so, you know, 60 seconds is actually a long time, if you're driving, you know, and frankly, sometimes when you're sitting at the stop sign and you have nothing better to do, it's kind of nice just to watch some... when you're sitting at the stop sign and you have nothing better to do, it's kind of nice just to watch something scroll, other than the birds or dog, you know, walking down the street. So, you know, maybe there's a happy medium between the eight and the sixty. That might be maybe fifteen seconds or thirty seconds, I don't really know. I know that this board's really kind of discussed sixty seconds sort of happy medium, so I'm not trying to stir the pot. I'm just thinking if there's maybe some alternatives. And, I think that is generally in terms of the thoughts I had in this. I agree. The language from August till now is quite a, quite a bit more digestible. It, it allows, it allows, I think, a much more relatable, common sense approach, right? So we're not just sticking government in places where government may not necessarily belong. So I think it's a great opportunity. In terms of the lighting, you know, what makes sense, right? So if it's cheaper for somebody to go with a knit versus the candle measurement, you know, if it's, if it's a difference of a hundred dollars in buying a sign, I, I don't know how that measures out. I mean, we want to do the best we can for, for our neighbors. But, really great work up to this point. Thanks for making it so easy to catch up and those are my thoughts on those particular issues at this time.
Thank you, Matt.
Hirsch, can I just, I wanted to clarify, because Matt brought up a really good point and he actually asked me about this and I didn't do a good job of explaining it. The window sign coverage, as it's written now, it does say per window. So, i- if there was some confusion there with the way I presented that, and we actually had, we might have had a joke in the office about this when we were discussing it, because a lot of windows are multi-pained. Whenever there's ambiguity in the zoning code, Nate Brown has the authority to interpret what that means. And so we kind of jokingly said, well, what about that little window? Because in his office, he has a, a window that contains four panes of glass. And Nate said, no, the whole opening is the window. So that's how we are intending to write, the language as written would intend to regulate the window as a per-window type of calculation. So if Planning Commission wished to regulate it more as a fifty percent of the overall, so they could mass the window cling or the window sign into one window versus the other, just so you know, the language would need to be changed. So we would need, when you get ready to deliberate in motion and stuff, you would need to change that. Just wanted to make sure.
Commissioner Waylon?
Thank you. And I thought, excuse me, I thought when we had this discussion, we did decide it would be fifty percent of the total windows. And we were talking, I believe, about Jersey Mike's as an example, that on the Shemao roadside, they have approximately fifty percent of the more permanent, whatever that product is called. And on the River roadside, it's a hundred percent. But when you take the rest, you know, the, the parking lot side, the west side of the building, and half of the south side, that's clear. So they were still in that fifty percent.
Yeah.
And I thought that's, was what we were going to allow to be, as opposed to fifty percent of the north, fifty percent of the south, fifty percent of the east, fifty percent of the west. Am I missing something?
That's kind of my memory also.
That was what I was thinking, too.
Dang it.
That means that my notes and our minutes were not the same. That, that, that's totally fine. I mean, honestly, I, I would just, I wanted to point that out when Matt said it to make sure that if a motion goes on the, on the table tonight, that we clarify that, just, so if that's, if that's the intent of Planning Commission, then we would want to add like one word into that section before it goes to council for their consideration.
I personally think it would make it more simplified.
That's fair.
And when you take, let's just take the building that, that Schoolhouse Square there that has, I think, three new businesses in it now, that the River roadside is basically signage. The parking lot side is.
The clear windows.
Clear windows, but it's still fifty percent. So, otherwise, are we going to go back and say, remove it and figure out how to expose your, your safes or water lines or whatever to everybody?
With this thought that was not really a thought, it's what we thought we were saying, does that change any of your comments, Jonathan? Come on up.
I mean, I, we, we haven't, we haven't run it out with our folks. I mean, obviously, it makes it, it makes it better. You know, I, yeah, I, I, I would, I would hazard to speak on that without running it past our folks.
We're, when Gary Pott mentioned that, I was like, yeah, that's what I kind of remember. It wasn't fifty percent of each window or whatever, but the total. And I remember Jersey Mike's is, hate to use them as our example, they're a good business, but, you know, they were the newest one and it was fifty percent is really that River Road section and their parking lot section's the clear.
Yes, it makes it better, I just would ask, you know, I would, what, what problem are we trying to solve? I mean, and I guess that's the question, so.
It's like sign neutrality, what are we trying to solve?
Supreme Court said we had to do that, though, but, anyway. So, yeah, without, I mean, obviously, yes, it, it, it makes it better than it, than it was. But without, I, I can't, I can't say that we'll run up the hill excited about it before we, before I talk to my folks, so.
Okay, thank you.
So my comment is, is this only going to be glass that, that could be viewable or is it all glazing? Because there's, you know, we require so much glazing in new construction. But a lot of that glazing's blacked out for reasons like this. So is it glazing or is it viewable space? If it was viewable when they moved in, or is it glass?
So, well, we're in new territory. It would be, well, there is spandrel glass, it's called the opaque glass, that, for example, the party mart store has. And they do that because they have, we do have glazing requirements and we allow spandrel glass, that opaque glass. And so when you have storage areas and that sort of thing, you have the ability then to put in opaque glass. And that is not advertising, that's simply glazing. So the, the question is, and, and quite honestly, I, it, this new concept, I, I've got to say, we did not catch that was your last intent. So, simply because you have a flat, smooth surface, should not make a difference as to how much advertising you're able to plaster. We limit wall signs, we limit, we have very strict limits on how, what kind of signage and how much signage each business is allowed. So, I, I'm a little, you can tell, I'm fumbling for words here a little bit because I'm not prepared to say that spandrel glass should be able to be covered with a window cling and, and say that's just fine. Because we go through all of this requirement on how we are trying to pay attention to the aesthetic of our community. And then to say it's all fair game seems a little weird to me. I'm just being honest.
So, this is coming up basically due to Jersey Mike's, is from what I remember. But, what's the Tan place down? Tan Republic. Tan Republic has been there for ten years like that and nobody's ever complained. So now, I mean, okay, it hasn't been brought up.
Not, not to the level of tax amendment, you're right.
Right. So, I, I imagine a few people could say they don't like that, they think that's too much. You know, that visual's too much for that particular space. But, I mean, overall, I never heard anybody complain about that. And my previous testimony was, you know, I talked about the Domino's, you know, their glass. And I, I, I don't see that there was ever really a problem until recently, but now, now it is. So, I mean, the fifty percent to me is still, still seems kind of high. So I would rather.
So the one, and the one thing I'll offer, Kyle, just so we remember, and I know especially for Matt and Crystal who weren't here before, I talked about this briefly when the first rendition came through in August. And if you remember, I, one, one of the things with all these changes that we proposed, it wasn't just about Gilbert and Reed, but since we were having to open it up for Gilbert and Reed, I was a code enforcement guy for a long time here at the City of Kaiser. And every time I try to get away from code enforcement, it keeps coming back to me somehow or some way. But, from an enforcement perspective, sign codes are very difficult to enforce. Nobody likes code enforcement guys anyway because we're telling people they can't do things. And if you look at what the code says right now today, window signs are only exempt if it's a sign hung on the inside of a window, right? So, historically and practically, we have not looked at window clings, which generally are what a lot of restaurants will have, that are technically probably on the outside. If I went up with a razor blade and touched it and said, is it on the outside or the inside? But from a staff's perspective of being able to enforce window signs, we said, hey, visual impact, whether or not it's inside or outside, it's kind of irrelevant, it's a sign in the window. So initially, the only reason I was going to touch this category was to clarify that the window clings, that if somebody really wanted to get difficult with us, we would say, well, anything on the outside of that window, it's, it's not okay. So we were trying to clarify that and then the discussion came up of being, well, wait a minute, we don't want people to just cover up those windows where we require certain amount of glazing depending on what zone you're in. So just to put it in a frame of reference, it is kind of a weird, the window signs kind of took on a weird life of its own. And, again, Planning Commissioners, I apologize because I did not, I know there was a lot of discussion. I'm going to blame it on how long it was and so that's why I missed it in the notes that we wanted to go the fifty percent overall. Because truly, and I even asked Nate, I was like, now, we've got everything, correct? So, so, yeah, just to give it that little bit of a frame of reference, just so you kind of know. You know, right now, it does say that inside the window, it's exempt. So we are saying, now we're going to clarify that it would be allowed in or a window cling attached to the outside, but we're limit, we're proposing to limit the, the percentage. So, for what it's worth.
So what, what about if it hangs inside the window frame? Does that count, I mean, that still counts? What's the distance? Do we, we don't have anything in here that says distance? So I'm just, we're going to get hit with this no matter what, so it probably should be at least discussed. So, that's, that's my thought on that. While I'm, while I'm speaking, the, the eight seconds that people are proposing, I've, I've kind of paid attention to this, too. And, and I feel that the eight seconds is, you know, adequate. Instead of the sixty seconds seems kind of long to me on the EMCs, whatever the, the digital reader boards.
So, do we, do we want to talk about the, the period of, of change on the electronic message? Because, a couple of things.
We came up with a minute the last time, right, in August, didn't we?
Right. It was sixty was, sixty was your recommendation last time. And the reason that we have concerns about it is, I don't know how many of you have purchased a flat-screen TV here recently? The price of a flat-screen TV right now is about a quarter of what I paid for it just five years ago. The reality is, this is going to be a, a technology that is going to be more and more readily available to each of us. Now, I don't, I know Jonathan just recently redid his sign for just the Plexiglas face and it was exorbitantly expensive. The concern that we have is the cumulative effect of what we're going to have for changing signs. Remember, this whole sign code was developed. We didn't have animation, we didn't have flashing, we didn't have all of this. And it's simply because we created an aesthetic that would be, signs were to mark a location and it was to be an identification for the premises. It wasn't to, it wasn't to get on that, you know, attention. It wasn't to advertise product. It was simply to create an aesthetic. That sign code was developed. So, we have developed an animation. I, I went out, stood in the middle of River Road during rush hour, not the smartest thing I've ever done in my life, to take pictures of signs along River Road. You would be amazed at how many signs that we have. I have asked our, our TV folks, our smart guys with the technology, to do an animation. And so I have an animation that I could show you. If these signs flashed eight, eight seconds, you would be surprised to see how much of an aesthetic difference that would make on to our commercial area. We have worked so hard to create the River Road Renaissance, to create the undergrounding utilities, to create the, to lower the signs and to get them into proportion. Because back in the day, signs were out of control. The entire buildings, the Battery Zone, the martial arts folks.
It was a Wild West.
It was, it was a mess. So this community has worked very hard to create an aesthetic for our community. Not, not just one individual in our community, but for the community as a whole. If you want to see that animation, I can play it for you. Debbie will have to work with me and it'll take a few minutes because I shut the computer. But, the reality is, it is, we have a lot of signs and you can expect that they, that they will be going to electronic message centers. Commissioner Waylon?
Thank you. When we came to our one-minute proposal last time, at least for myself, I thought going from fifteen minutes to one was a huge plus. But I've also paid attention to signs in different communities. And I don't think eight seconds is going to be inherently create any problems or dangers. And, so I, I'm fine with moving to eight seconds. Hopefully, the rest of us would be. But also, to make all of the electronic signs, whether they be on bouquets or whoever might have them, as well as the school district, the fire district, all of them just operate under one set of rules and guidelines. Because the bank down here by Carl's Jr., I can't remember the name of them.
Willamette Valley.
Yeah, thank you. Willamette Valley is very conscientious about trying to get community messages out for fundraisers, for student activities, student athletic activities. And I think it would help them to help the community, as well as get their own message out as a business. Because they're the ones paying for it. So by allowing them to have more flexibility in changing the timing of the signs, I think we'll win by that.
And, and, and I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Waylon on that, to, to the degree that, you know, sixty seconds is, is a huge compromise from fifteen minutes, right? I mean, for, for us to even go from a minute, or, you know, fifteen minutes, which, you know, frankly, I don't know that, I, I would venture to say that unless you work across the street from a sign, you, you're never going to see it ever change, right? So, that's a portion of it. But to come down to a minute, you know, it's good, but at the same time, what I'm, what I'm hearing from, from the representatives of the chamber and from those, and then again, having experiences with the Parks and Police Fee, and then just that public-private thing, I don't, maybe eight seconds, maybe not the right way to go. Maybe, like I said, maybe the suggestion is the fifteen to thirty, you know, because you're coming down from it. Because that minute is a long, long time. It's not compared to the fifteen minutes, but maybe, you know, if, if there's a, if there's a compromise between the minute and the eight seconds that would be considered, or, or just the eight seconds, I, I, you know. I, I appreciate the volume of signs and the volume of the, the blinking and the, it could, it could potentially become distracting. Especially at night for people that have, you know, vision issues at night, you know, or, or, you know, have that squirrel mentality where they're focused on one thing and then it's flashing, ooh, over here, and then they're crashing, I don't know, right? But, hopefully that's not the case. And I, and I think that our, our measurement of the light would be sensitive to that so that we're making sure not to make things too bright. But, you know, if this is open for continual discussion, I know we're at sixty seconds right now for the recommendation, but, you know, again.
you know, again, maybe there's something in the middle, between the eight and the 60.
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson.
Hi, thank you, sorry. And this may be covered somewhere else in the code, but I am wondering if there are recommendations or guidelines around the size of the signs, the electronic signs, the content, and then also look and feel? Is it possible that we can change the timing if these messages look similar or controlled in a way that aren't distracting?
Well, um, part of the whole issue is we cannot regulate content in any way. So how it looks, whether it's similar to one sign or another, if, if we develop a regulation that requires us to read the sign, then we can't do it. That's, that's the whole basis of the court decisions that have been handed down. So, yeah, and that's another reason why we are urging more caution than, so that's why we're asking for a conservative approach. Open the window a little bit and see what kind of impact there is, those kinds of things. And, and maybe, you know, our world is changing and our sensitivity develops over time, but to make radical changes is, I think, creates a lot more feeling and a lot more response.
Thank you.
So, and I guess why I'm sort of a little more sensitive to this topic is really because I think we're, at least my, my understanding is maybe this is being looked at in the perspective of the here and now, and we're not necessarily looking at, I think there, there's, there's a potential negative adverse consequence of this thought process, but there's also a possible benefit. And I'm thinking in terms of, you know, um, from the I-5 perspective, trying to attract additional sort of commerce to the community from that point, but at the same time, try to still maintain some semblance of control on River Road. And that's why maybe eight seconds isn't the right answer, maybe 30 is. You know, because if you're going I-5, 65 miles an hour, yeah, right. Most people are going much faster than that. You know, eight seconds is quick. 60 seconds is maybe not long enough. And if, you know, Volcanoes is specifically promoting a game or, you know, their, their RV show or whatever other event they've got going on, you know, we've got this one going on. And also, by the way, come to this next one, it could be the difference maker in some ends of that. So, um, you know, I just want, that, that's kind of what I was thinking is we can think in the here and now and, and sort of the, the, the impact now could be considered. You know, again, at the eight seconds might, might not be the right answer. You know, I, I don't know if, if, you know, 30 seconds is it again, but, um, we're, we're close, I think.
So, sorry, would you like to see the video?
I think so.
Commissioners?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Go ahead.
While Debbie's setting that up, I, I hear and appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Lawyer. But we're setting the maximum they can do. But the individual businesses may decide to make their sign 15 seconds. We're not saying it can't be any more than eight seconds. We're just saying this is the maximum it can be. And then maybe you do make adjustments for a 30 mile an hour speed limit as opposed to a 60 mile an hour speed limit.
That's a great point.
You know, just.
It's behind us. It's the speed limit for signs.
Well, there is a, a whole science on that. I've been, I read some material on that here recently because of this.
Here we have one of our areas. It's J.C.'s Pizzeria. Yeah, see? And very brave. Anyway, so here's, here's one area where there are a few signs. And if they were to change every eight seconds, then it would look something like this.
Sure nice they're all sharing content.
So as you can see, the cumulative effect is something that we also have to pay attention to. There are a lot of areas that are very dense with signs. And our technology is changing. And, um, so it, it's not just an individual sign gosh, that would be, you know, one individual sign, that's not a big deal. And part of the reason why we allow electronic message centers, but because we require them to be static, is I'll guarantee you the reason people do not go through the added expense currently of installing electronic message. But once again, the price of these, of this technology is coming so dramatically low that we can expect that this is going to be a pretty standard kind of desire to have an electronic message center. So, I don't, we could play it forever, but. I'll just. So we actually have a cou- a couple of these loops, but I think you get the idea with just the one.
I'll give my two cents on the subjects here. Uh, on the window signs, I, I really like the idea of 50% total. And there was a statement about, well, should we have the places that have it more taken down? I think they should be grandfathered in in future development. That's my, on that. On the, um, blinking lights, we had a long, long discussion on that at our meetings last year. And there was a, a certain amount of wanting, keeping it at the 15 minute. There was discussion about keeping it that way. And it made sense to come down. But again, the 60 seconds was probably more of a compromise on the commission's part versus, um, you know, where everybody said, yeah, 60 minutes. It was a compromise. We're, we're at the 60 seconds now. And, um, I do appreciate, I'm a visual learner, so it does, uh, that was helpful for me. I think personally, eight seconds is too fast for some sections of Kaiser, i.e. River Road, Cherry Avenue, those areas. Out along the freeway, I think it's a different story. But again, I don't, I, uh, the other commissioners made comments of, and, uh, our speaker tonight mentioned, I like to keep it simple. And if, you know, Salem has a different sections, town is this way, that way, it's, so I, I'm reluctant to make those kind of suggestions. I'm more for maybe 30 seconds to 60 seconds in my mind at this point in time. And as technology changes, this should be a subject that the, the chamber, this commission, and the city council can relook at. That's my two cents. Well, uh, there was a long discussion on the windows and from leaving it alone to whatever. And I think we, we came up with 50% of the total, not, you know, 50% of each window or anything like that. And my sense of fairness is if a business has already got it, I'm not going to go in there and say, well, there's new rules, you got to do it. I, I just don't feel that's fair. But as new development and new, new changes, and if a, a business wants, you know, we're, we're picking on, I, I appreciate Commissioner mentioning that we were picking on a particular business who, you know, the only reason is they're in a more visible place than the others are. If they decide, hey, what would be nicer? We could make that suggestion, but I don't think they would have to do that at this point in time. Commissioner Wayland.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. You mentioned maybe we have a different, uh, speed area for sign chain speed area like River Road and Cherry as opposed to River Road, or excuse me, the freeway. What is the way you would see that being put into words? And then the practical application of it or enforcement of it? Because, you know, right now, they just have the one big sign at Kaiser Station. The volcanoes have a sign. I don't know what the hotel is going to do. But we don't have a whole lot of River Road exposure for signage. So is it worthwhile to have separate and distinct?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry?
No.
Don't all jump in at once. Kaiser Station is governed by a master plan. The volcanoes is outside of that master plan, those rules. We actually have a very specific signage requirement in Area A of Kaiser Station. And the reason for that is because they wanted the, the ginormous pylon sign, which nobody else in the city has. And as a compromise, then each individual business does, is not allowed a freestanding sign. They're allowed, um, they're allowed wall signs. And we actually made some accommodations to allow secondary frontage signs, all those kinds of things over the years to try and accommodate their ability. Interesting, there's more at play than just our sign code with Kaiser Station. And that's their private agreements that they have and, and control and veto power, all of those things. Building heights are limited more by those agreements than they are by the development code. So it's, it's a lot of interplay of different factors. We could develop some language that said if you're within 1,000 feet of an interstate freeway, we could actually say that in the code. We could develop something like that. What, what the actual practical on the road, hit the street kind of thing would be, I'm, it's a little hard to predict at this point.
So we're going to have a little bit more, um, buildings going up in Area B soon. So you, you'd pretty much need to include anything that's commercial because you're going to have Schmawa Road, you're going to have Lock Haven, you're going to have all of that there that's going to potentially have electronic signs or the potential for it. So we, if we're going to do this, we've got to be prepared to hit anything. So it sounds to me like we're, we're going to end up like Salem with a different zone for, for everything unless we say it blankets everybody.
The simplicity would say just blanket everybody.
Yeah.
Because I think too, just like using Kaiser Activity Center is a, you know, they have, kind of like a homeowners association, we have City of Kaiser rules, and they have their own rules that each of the tenants or residents are required to abide by. And they can't be less than what we are as a city. But it would be, so if, if you do go just one-size-fits-all, again, you know, maybe the businesses on River Road would be saying, well, you know, that's, I don't need to go that fast. I want people to actually read my message.
And I just think frankly, for a lot of the business on the road, it's probably cost prohibitive for a lot of them to be buying these signs because they're not cheap. But.
It's probably no more distracting though than drinking my coffee, eating my sandwich, or putting on my mascara, or all the other things you see as you're driving down the road. I mean.
Yeah.
Somebody watching you put on your mascara.
There's no videos yet.
Oh, God.
And I didn't mean me specifically, more of America.
I know, but I just.
That's, that's okay. I was having visions there. It was horrible.
Let me kind of clarify with the, the commissioners. We're, we're really zeroing in on the electronic message timing, correct? Is that the one? Does everybody kind of have all their comments on the, the windows?
Yes.
I had a comment about the grand openings or other special occasion signs. A little bit different. I'm just reading this and maybe I'm being too literal, but number two, you know, number one, it says allows any combination of oversized banners or multiple portable signs for two-week period, two times a year. Should that be two times a year total, or can it be of each? Do they have like a lot of different special occasions? So I'm seeing that they could, it could potentially be exploited in its current wording. Just perhaps putting some, two times a year total.
Yeah, I got you. I got you. Okay.
So you're thinking putting in.
And that was the intent.
That was the intent. Okay.
Matt? Commissioner, I, I apologize because there, there was the, the, the timing of the elections piece that I did bring up in terms of those four. Is that something that's worth putting in? The code on the specific designated SOS, excuse me, Secretary of State designated timeframes? Or are we going to do just?
Yeah, until, yeah. I, your example of the school district or some other special district having an election, I think they are also limited to those Secretary of State dates. And so I think our language is governmental election, so I, I. So we, I think, well, the, the intent is that it is a, a recognized governmental election, which would then be the same thing of what you're saying. But I guess I will have to look to the attorney.
Well, for some reason, my microphone doesn't work. Coincidence? I'll talk to you later. So, uh, so I think on, with regard to Matt's suggestion, I don't, I, I would prefer not to because I don't know for sure what those elections are in terms of those dates, and I don't think it's necessary to, to change that. So I think, I think the way it reads right now, government, but I'm actually going to think about that a little bit more if it looks like we need to clarify that. You know, that right now, at least in Oregon, you can't choose to have an election whenever you want. There's certain election times, and I think there's actually more than, a possibility of more than four for certain special elections. But the second, but if you're the school district or a city or a special district and you say, you know, this is really important, we need to have an election right away. It's not like, well, you don't get to set. It, it's not like, well, you don't get to set it, you've got to go to the state, and there are certain timelines that are issued for that. So I'll, I'll consider that, I don't think that we need to make a change now for that, though.
It does say governmental.
Sorry, I, I was referring, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I was referring to the chart, and so I wasn't looking at the specific election. This was, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
But, but now that after I'm listening to Shannon, if there's a possibility for even more elections, then I think
Oh!
Then, I think Then I think perhaps we might want to clarify up to four times a year, you, did you look at the...
Which four?
I have not looked at the...
Well, the, specifically, the SOS says the, the four specific timeframes, and they're not necessarily prescriptive per year, sometimes you have the off years and those other things that sort of happen, and so there could be up to four per year, but again, they're not overly, the specificity, specificity is not necessarily there, it just says these can occur within these four designated timeframes.
Well, if somebody has, for some weird way to call special elections 12 times a year, that might be a problem for us. How would we
Very expensive.
You know, go from one to the other, to whatever. So I, I guess I will leave that in the attorney's hands.
Oh, so, so I apologize, it says there are four regularly scheduled elections every year, so those four dates, and then it talks specifically about the special elections for federal purposes, and then whatever the legislature deems necessary for purposes of state business. Where's that affect?
Which means it could be
Fun to enforce.
But in most cases, I mean historically, it's going to be
In most cases, it's a four-year, right?
Really have minimal impact
Right.
We're talking about.
Yeah. Using the term governmental, I think that'll cover everything. That a governmental wouldn't be like if churches have an election for elders or something, or Salem Electric.
Well, they're not governments.
Right. So... What's the next step here? So I think we need to make a, Shannon?
Mr. Chair, I think you need to double check that there's no one else that would like to testify.
Then... There is nobody.
Okay. Then, the next step is for the commission to decide whether or not you want to close the public hearing and deliberate tonight, leave the public hearing, deliberate later, or close the public hearing, deliberate later, one or the other. We usually suggest not closing the hearing if you're going to deliberate another night, and the reason for that is people always want to come that other night and talk, and you've already closed the public hearing. So if you feel that you've got all your questions answered, after you close the public hearing, you can still talk to staff, but you can't talk to any of the other participants, but if you're at the point where you feel like you want to put a motion on the table, then the appropriate thing to do would be to close the public hearing and go ahead and deliberate.
I'm looking down the line.
So, do we, do we put a pin on the recommendation for the AMCs?
In deliberate.
Excuse me. As it was.
Can we have a consensus?
You can close the public.
I can close it.
You, you can close the public hearing even if you don't have consensus. The only, the only question, and especially for the new commissioners, is do you feel that you have any questions at all for any of the folks here tonight? And if you don't, then you can go ahead and close the public hearing, and then put a motion on the table or discuss, and then put a motion or ask staff questions, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on the proposed text amendment, section 2.308 signs, and we'll go into deliberations. As we look down, the, the only areas that I've heard that we, there's some differences of opinion or some opinions, is on the window signs and on the electronic messaging. Am I correct? Therefore, at least that portion that we do agree on, staff could, okay, so the, I'm going to move in on window signs, requires no more than 50% of the total surface area, and that's the wording we want to use, that word "total." Am I hearing? Okay. And that, my question is grandfathering.
I do have a question about that, Hersh.
Okay. Excuse me.
After you, you have the mic.
Well, maybe I just... So, the, the window signs as they are now are not permitted, they're not, they're not permanent, they are simply something that people, they have not been legally established is what generally the threshold we look at for grandfathering status. When a regulation changes, somebody comes in and says, well, I'm grandfathered in, we have to be able to look at that and say, okay, what was your, what was your legal establishment of that use? On a, on something like what we're talking about here, there is no process, there is no, it is not a permanent structure, it is not anything that, that we have regulated in the past. With that, I will turn it over to the attorney.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for sharing the mic. Your other option, you have two options that we've discussed, one, the more typical one is the new regulations, or the new regulations, they go in effect 30 days afterwards, and we would allow a grace period unofficially probably and try to notify people. That's what we've been anticipating. The other thing is, is you could have a grandfathering one, like you're suggesting, Hersh. I would agree with Nate that on this kind of level, it's a little unusual on what is, it, it is not like a freestanding sign, a five, 10, $30,000 sign, that, I've been around way too long. I just wanted to say, by the way, to Matt and Crystal, you guys really lucked out, because I talked for a really long time in the first sign thing, and I, I decided that you, you didn't, you didn't need to hear the whole dissertation on content neutrality, so I, I want you to know that you didn't, you know, but come afterwards if you want to hear us. The, back to the grandfathering, what we did, and the reason I brought that up, is I was around back then, we had a seven-year amortization period for permanent signs. They're very expensive, and we're going to make people take them down right away. We had a 90-day grandfather period, if you will, amortization for portable or temporary signs. You could choose to have something as an amortization period, which would be a compromise between a media enforcement and a permanent grandfathering, which I agree with Nate, would be kind of hard to, it would be a little bit hard to do, I think. I don't know how expensive these window clings are, that was the purpose of an amortization period, to let a, a business owner amortize the cost of that sign based on not just the cost, but what the expected, you know, lifetime of the, of the product is. I don't understand these window clings or the, the sign, most, in the old days, they just painted them, you know, that's, just painted on the inside of the, the window. So you could choose to do that, you could choose to say 90, 60 days, one year, whatever you chose to do in your recommendation, if you felt that a, a media enforcement of the window, new change in the window regulations was inappropriate.
Gary?
Is it practical and doable to just say, and let's use the tanning booth place, tanning company down there on...
Your mic.
Is it practical or doable to maybe put in the language existing, you know, these cling signs in place prior to March 14th, 2018, will be allowed to continue?
In other words, the grandfathering issue
Yeah, but just by, you know...
Well, you would, that's, that's how we would handle it.
By talking about specifically that product, because that product is not addressed.
Right.
Do you, do you mean a specific product versus a window sign generally?
Well, there's, again, you know, there's the window signs that people just go and they, they tape up, they're having red five loaves for a dollar, and so the sign goes up on...
They just put a cardboard sign inside the window, right.
These are, to me, are more permanent sign versus
Oh.
A sale ad.
See, I, and, and again, I got to reiterate, I don't understand this window cling issue, I mean, are they, they're put up, they're not designed to change copy then, is that the concept?
No, I think they're basically, essentially, Jonathan, you might know, these are sort of a permanent fixture to the building, is that...
Hearing is closed.
Sorry.
Sorry, Jonathan.
They had me turn my mic on, it couldn't have hurt you.
But thank you, Jonathan.
No, I think I understand the point now, Gary. I would be hesitant to get into distinctions in types of product, I understand the idea in terms of a fairness issue, I, I think what you're getting at is the expense or difficulty of changing that versus other types of window signs. See, I don't...
And the one thing I would say is that, you know, we've talked a lot about two specific businesses that have the entire windows covered, but historically, from the code enforcement hat, honestly, where we've seen most of the window clings is in your higher turnover restaurants that you buy food from your vehicle, and they use them, and they do change them out very regularly based on what special may be running, and so you get the window clings in the windows that advertise your, whatever it is that you're advertising, so these are all, they would all be grouped together, and I think that, my, my concern, and that's why I jokingly said, Hersh, I, I have a question about grandfathering, too, because I think practically, we don't, Nate said they weren't permitted in the sense that we don't issue a permit for them, they're just an outright allowed sign as, as a, as a means of design, so they're just permitted outright, so the hard part would be for setting a timeframe in place and amortization, just from a practical, I'm not sure how we get there, I like the idea, I'm just not sure how.
Matt?
So, so I have a thought, and, and actually, your turnover restaurant idea was my, my, where exactly where I wanted to go with it. So, my thought was, what if, the grandfather, so to speak, for whatever businesses in question are being discussed right now, the, the thought process I was thinking was either go change of ownership or change of advertising. So, for example, if business X currently has 75.4% of their total covering, when they go to change something, then it goes in the rule. So you have, so it's almost like the, your, your goal, I don't want to use goalposts for the, for the example, but for lack of a better term, you, you have your goalpost right now that becomes the 50% of your total volume, but as soon as they go to a new, or they change business models, or, 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 then it goes to the new standard. So that was kind of my thought. Reset it, Sil, yeah.
So, one of the things that I am wrestling with is how are we going to enforce whatever rules that we come up with? We have one in code enforcement officer in this town, and half of his time is devoted to police support activities, such as parking, homeless camps, et cetera. The other 50% of his time is dedicated to development code requirements, such as tall grass and weeds, junk, noxious vegetation, and those kinds of things. And thrown in there is sign code enforcement. Now, that, what you're suggesting is somehow we know exactly what window temporary signs are on every window in the City of Kaiser, and when that changes, or when something happens, that we're going to then automatically know there's a new owner there, or there's a new whatever. We do not have the ability to enforce that kind of, of program, not without some sort of way more, so license them, create some sort of permit, do something like that for these kinds of things. Otherwise, we're fooling ourselves to come up with an elaborate structure of when they're allowed and how they're allowed to be changed or not. Just, even with the switching to a total percentage of all the glazing in the building is, as it was, Ben had a little bit of apoplexy with just the proposed language. I'm just trying to put some reality here as to what we're talking about.
Along with that, I had a question, there was a couple, there's one change on the abandoned signs to 120 days. If somebody complained about abandoned signs, Ben would be busy for a month, because there are a lot of signs that have not been taken down or not been changed according to our code. So, a, a lot of this stuff, we're, we're adding, adding more in, and there's no way he's going to keep up if somebody decides to complain. So this, this is adding one more level of something that's not going to get fully taken care of.
And it's a balance. We, we enforce by complaint in many of our situations, junk and, and noxious vegetation, noxious vegetation. You know, we respond based on complaints, and that's, and we depend upon the community to be partners with us in policing these kinds of rules. The, the abandoned signs, I, we just simply, we've always had that rule, and so simply reducing the amount of time that they can be up would be, or we upped it?
We upped it, yeah, because 30 days is a pretty short timeframe.
Yeah, so we, we basically upped it to be able to say, okay, when a business changes, or when some, something happens, then there is a natural process of whatever, anyway. So we, we, everything we've done has been with an eye to what is our capacity, and what kind of an impact will this create for us in, in an enforcement burden? So, moving on with windows, do we have at least a, an agreement, compromise, that the wording "total," or do we want to drop the whole thing?
And I still think we need to consider how we define it, if glazing needs to be, I mean, there's, it's pretty, you know, it can be read a couple different ways, if people understand the glass versus glazing, or, so there's another, I think that needs to be
One thing, oh, sorry, Kyle, I was going to say, in our design standards section, so when we talk about building design, the way we regulate it there is we talk about window and doorway openings. So, I mean, that would possibly give us some guidance, we could kind of look at the design standards section and maybe try to mirror that, so it would be based on a structural element of a building, is how it would be calculated.
What I'm trying to reach here is at least get a bulk of the stuff moving ahead, and if there's an area there that maybe we can kind of ask you to do more research on, does that, is that possible? Well, I, going back to Commissioner Duran, I'm, I'm still a little, want to make sure I get this stuff right, because obviously, I'm, your concern is that we are inclusive of all glazing areas, or that we exclude a certain type of glazing?
I just want to make sure it's understood, is it clear glass, is it just glass, or, you know?
Okay, well, I, I think...
Is it the frame also?
I think we have enough guidance that we can, we can fine tune that, if, and our intent is all glazing, whether it's spandrel, because the only reason they use spandrel glass is because we're already requiring a certain percentage of glazing, and they, in some of their interior programs, then they say, well, wait, we've got some storage areas, we don't want windows in, and that's an option for them, but, and that's my earlier comment, if we were to simply say, oh, well, then, that's then free for, to be included, but again, those are policy decisions. If we, if we just say, a building is required to have 50% glazing in our commercial business district, and if you want all of that area to be allowed as, as part of the window cling program, that's fine, I think under the current language, that's clear enough, and maybe we might want to coordinate our definition and that sort of thing, but I think we're good with that concept. Now, if we want to... Now, if we want to change that, then we'd look at something different.
Um, the only, get my own mic. The only thing that I'd add is, I think at the end, you were talking about the frame. I would definitely say would not include the frame, and I would agree with Nate, unless you want to make a change, that it would be the entire glazing area regardless of what it looks like, whether it's opaque or not, but it would not include the frame.
I, I think we're just asking for a, a lot of headaches trying to regulate this.
This particular?
The whole, the whole thing. That's my two cents.
Can we compromise on this one and then move on to the? Light?
What's your compromise?
I'm just, as it's written, or?
Uh, what's the intent or kind of the root issue going on with window signs that we're trying to solve?
It's unregulated signs.
That, I, I can't address that directly, that's kind of a policy question, but I can, for the commission, tell you historically, what happened with the window signs is the original window signs were fifty percent, is my memory, back in nineteen ninety. And at some point, and I don't remember if it was the late nineties, I believe, there was a push, because the, the business owners said, you know, well, what difference does it make? The issue was covering up the windows aesthetically or whatever. And the consensus of the council at that time is, the business owner makes a trade off by having more of the window covered up, in terms of view or aesthetics, and they can make that as a business choice. So the policy decision at that time was to have it unrestricted, that you could have a hundred percent of your window covered with window signs, and it doesn't count against any of your sign rights. So that's the way it has been since that amendment. I think the question now is, is frankly, in the past, most businesses didn't cover up their entire sign or entire windows. They would use, usually in the lower portion, if you've been around long enough. Now, with these newer products, you, you're seeing more of them covered up. It's additional signage, so it's an aesthetic issue. I mean, you can, depending on what it looks like, it looks just like a regular sign, even though it's in a window. So it's a policy question on whether or not that, if there's too much sign, and whether or not there's a clear area or not. And that's, that's how we kind of got, we kind of come full circle in a way.
So the root issue is the aesthetics. What, what are the aesthetics that we are creating in our downtown core? And what do we want our community, community to look like?
Kyle, go ahead.
We, we gotta, you know, my, my opinion is it's a commercial core. I mean, it's River Road is, and that's what we're really talking about, is commercial, it's businesses. So I feel that the business can, should be able to use what, as much as they can to, to draw people in. I can't do myself, I've got, you know, twenty square feet of glass, so I'm kind of screwed. I can only do a small, a small sign no matter what, so.
Put it in a bigger window. So, if I, I'd like to ask a clarifying question. So, the glazing requires at least fifty percent clear glass right now, is that correct, or did I misunderstand that? So, my question is, if a business, I'm sorry?
Glazing.
Glazing.
Right. It doesn't have to be clear, it has to be glazing.
Okay. So, of that glazing, they can have, businesses can choose to have a certain amount of it being that opaque glass, correct? So, I'm sorry?
It's blacked out.
So, I guess, I, so I guess, under this thought process, at the fifty percent of the total volume, is there really any aesthetic difference other than you have a darkened out piece of glass or a sign? So, and again, I think that's, you know, it's like, for, for, again, you get into sort of the taste versus aesthetics, I, 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 I get that. I mean, I don't want, but, you know, if, if it's an opportunity for a business to maybe promote their brand in a aesthetically pleasing way versus just, here's a big sheet of dark glass. I personally would lean more towards the, let's be a little bit more inclusive of, of that. Now, obviously, if it's, I, I know we can't talk about content, right, but hopefully, you know, most of the business owners in Kaiser are gonna be responsible enough to, to put something up that's offensive or otherwise non-pleasing for folks driving down the river road. They don't want to deter folks from coming. I don't know that a cockroach business would put a big picture of a squished cockroach on their window, but they may.
They very well may.
But, 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 but again, I, I think, you know, in terms of what makes better sense, right? I mean, do we want to attract consumers and businesses, or do we want to detract? I would be more inclined to want to say we want to attract, and if fifty percent of the total, at, at this point, could be either opaque or this cling, I mean, it's kind of six and one half and as the other.
I was just gonna say, from a, I think the one thing is, just to clarify, the code doesn't specifically say you can use spandrel glass. That has been an interpretation, that because of the ambiguity Nate has allowed a few businesses to do because of things like a safe or something, a x-ray room, or, or whatever. But the one thing is, you know, the, kind of the, I know, right? From, from the, kind of the urban design architectural perspective with the buildings, you know, one of the reasons that we, we provide glass on storefronts is to create a, a certain kind of a street frontage and a presence. And it is, you know, Kyle, I like what you say about River Road, and, I mean, we're driving by at thirty-five miles an hour. So there, I mean, I, so I totally get that. But that is the one thing, is that the glass requirement isn't necessarily intended to be able to see into a building.
Right.
But rather how the building interfaces with the built environment. So just, just where, you know, like, I don't know, my dad just put a brand new wrap on his boat. It's very different if you were to say, like, throw a wrap on a piece of spandrel glass. That is a very different vibe as it interfaces with you versus a tinted glass or something like that providing sun shade. So, so I think.
I, I get it, I know we don't want boat barf, to use a Commissioner Whelan term, all over River Road, right? But at the same time, it's not a one size fits all for River Road, because you do have some of the complexes where you are gonna be walking around. You do have storefront, whereas others, you know, you're zipping by, and unless you know it's there, you don't know it's there. And maybe this is the difference between some folks knowing that something's there versus them not, I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is on that, but.
And I guess the one, the one thing I would just say from an equity standpoint, like, another option you guys could look at doing is so allow it outright, but include it in total allowed sign area, or have it be regulated that way. You know, Kyle made a good point, his business only has a twenty square foot window, but if the business next to him has a two hundred square foot window, you know, he doesn't get to advertise as much as they do. So if you want to level the playing field, that would be another way to approach it, which we didn't even consider that. But if that's something to be more equitable, if that what you're kind of getting at, to allow people kind of the same, that would be, I guess, something to look at.
Personally, I think the amortization process in that one would be far more difficult than trying to get rid of clings.
Go ahead.
Do we need to address it?
I kind of like the, the look of what we're talking about, so I don't, you know, I'm happy with leaving it the way it is.
What, with the fifty percent?
No, the, the way thing.
Oh, okay.
I, I like the buildings that we're talking about. I think they look nice. They may not be what we would like if everybody did it, but I, not everybody can do it. And I think if we tried to limit, limit it down to.
Put more windows in.
Yeah. Well, maybe I need to put my card out, but if we, if we did, if we changed this to total sign coverage, it wouldn't even come close to, to being easy to manage, because, I mean, nobody could do what they wanted to do with, with that.
No, well, it would be a permit process, and it would be governed under our, our sign permit process. What Shane is suggesting, and, and what that would mean is you would, what that would mean is we would then have to come up with a, a different calculation as to how much. Because what you're talking about is increasing, dramatically increasing the amount of signage that a business would be allowed to have. And then, that would be, that would be no different than the sign process that we have already established. It would just be a different thought process.
We could have some huge signs on River Road again, which I would rather not see. I would rather see these wraps on the places that can use them. Do you guys want to know how I feel?
So what I, I'm hearing is the, well, we, there's two things that are kind of on the table for this one area. Is the, as it's written, requires no more than fifty percent of the total surface area. Or let's just wipe that section out. Is that what I'm?
So, Mr. Chair, I, I will, I will say, though, that as it's written, it does specify the specific window, not the total surface area. I think the total surface area was part of the conversation that fleshed out early on, and again, I apologize for opening up that can of worms, but, I mean, I have my drawings here. And I started fifty percent of the window, and then I went fifty percent in the center, and then I went, oh, maybe they mean fifty percent of the total volume. So, I apologize for my naivete in that one particularly, so I did not mean to open this can of worms.
Right now, I, I hear, you know, everything is, we haven't got to the electronic, but everything else is good. The window one, we probably could talk all night, and everybody's making good comments, so I'm not, you know.
If we would, if we would just wipe out the fourth item there, just wipe it out, what Wild West factor does it have for planning and compliance?
You mean the fifty percent?
Yeah.
Well, it would be what we're doing now.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, we wouldn't have to do anything.
I'll, I'll motion, I'll make a motion on that.
Okay.
That we leave it, that we just take that item out of the.
Can we do that by consensus?
I mean, I made a motion, somebody can second it.
Oh, Gary, hang on. So the one thing I would say is that, as I, as I kind of said at the beginning, part of the reason why this initially even got touched was to clarify that window clings were allowed at all. Because the current language in the code specifically says hung or painted on the inside of a window. So, so you, so we, we would need to.
Add it to the.
If, if you have the language of the actual code in front of you? It's on page ten of signs, it's sub I. So Shane's additional language, you would include up to the word environment if you want to leave the concept that cha- you would make a change, but it would only be a change to clarify window clings. If you wanted to leave and allow a hundred percent coverage, as Kyle is suggesting, then the, the motion would be to delete the rest of the phrase after provided. So it'd say, provided such windows cover no, no more than fifty percent, that's the part you'd want to delete if you wanted to leave the regulations essentially the same. Then you'd be only making the clarifying language that Shane came up with with regard to window clings. Because that, that does need to be there, I think, just to clarify.
I'm fine with that.
I am too, actually.
Okay.
It makes it simpler.
Okay.
You need a second, I think.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? I go along with the compromise. The next one is electronic messaging. It's sixty seconds, and if I remember last, that was the one we took forever to talk about. It was from, sixty seconds was a compromise that was made that night. And I, giving my two cents, I'm reluctant to go to eight seconds. Just because, just because, I don't have any real good scientific reasons. I've done a little bit of background on, you know, I'm on the traffic safety, looking at traffic safety information. And there's very little hard scientific data that says eight seconds, thirty seconds, or any amount of time causes traffic issues or whatever. So, I could find a study that says it does, and then I could find a study that says it doesn't. So, you know, everything's up in the air. So it's more of an arbitrary decision on our part, in my opinion. And I'm throwing out thirty seconds. Just because I'm a little scared of eight seconds.
I'll budge, we'll say ten seconds.
Well. Well, it almost is, guys, because there's no real hard, hard data, scientific data that, from a traffic safety or whatever, there may be in the future that says eight seconds is dangerous, or sixty seconds is dangerous. But right now, it's, I didn't, I couldn't find any.
So, I, again, sixty seconds is way better than fifteen minutes, way better than twenty-four hours. I would say, maybe suggest sort of setting a fifteen, no more than fifteen minute.
Fifteen seconds?
Excuse me, as I was, fifteen. Just seeing whose heart rate would go up. Fifteen seconds, but then, but then really let the businesses determine it for themselves to, no more than fifteen seconds.
Right, it, this is the, the, the governor's screw, so they can't any faster than that. But businesses may consent it any, excuse me, anywhere that they want it. And I, I would really encourage, because, as mentioned during the testimony and stuff, in the commissioner's comments, these reader boards have been, at times, really part of our community.
Exactly right.
I got to live through the McNary High School days when they were state championships and, and the football. We didn't have the fancy reader boards back in ninety-seven and, and two thousand and one. But the businesses were just excited about that. And with the reader boards, not only can they advertise their business, they can advertise our community. And that, I'm all for. And, but the eight seconds, I, I really can't tell you why I'm scared of it, but maybe a little higher up might be, I may be dead wrong, but I, the fifteen minute, but fifteen seconds doesn't sound too bad to me, but.
Well, Mr. Chair, the eight seconds we saw in the video, I mean, it was, that was a lot. I mean, especially, granted, that's, that's like, you know, Vegas Strip, everything's going on. I, I don't know that Kaiser, at least in the next ten years, is really gonna get there. I think it's gonna be too cost prohibitive for a lot of the businesses that generally struggle to just make payroll most of the time. And I'm making assumptions here, not being a business owner and just looking at, you know, a lot of these places that just struggle, you know, to keep folks there long term, and, you know, high turnover and turnover businesses, I mean. So, so that's just my thought, you know, and, and, and so maybe the fifteen is, is sort of that, that good stopgap between the eight and the sixty, I don't know. But, you know, again, allows the flexibility, and, and again, you know, if that fifteen seconds encourages business to want to help in the public process, and we get more people participating in the city process overall, I think that's just an overall added benefit to the community and the health of the community and, and planning moving forward. So, I, I would, I would suggest a fifteen second rollover. I've already looked at this way, I'm looking.
Do we have any numbers or data that support how many businesses would want fifteen versus thirty versus sixty? I've heard that they definitely don't want fifteen minutes, but I'm just hearing different intervals of time.
Well, in our testimony that we received, they were recommending eight seconds from the chamber.
Yeah, I, I think that that was a consideration, I mean, by most of the people in business, is to make it as, as low as possible to, to get the most message out. And that eight seconds came into effect because that's kind of where the threshold was for the large billboard signs. And that eight seconds came into effect because that's kind of where the threshold was for the large billboard signs. And so it's like, why not just use that number is what it came up with. And it, nobody's been able to say it's an issue of safety or anything, so.
Well, I haven't, you know, as I mentioned, I couldn't find any number that was considered a safety clear study where that if you have it at this, you're going to have that the X amount of, um, injury accidents. There's just nothing there. There's just not studies, it's one area, there's just not. So it's, it's kind of, we're being kind of arbitrary picking it, uh.
If we're going to be arbitrary, I'll make a motion to keep it at eight, if anybody wants to pick up on that.
Gary. And we have a motion that, uh, to put it at eight seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I oppose. All in favor?
So I get to add the thing that a tie is a failed vote, so in case you didn't know. So you, you need to make another motion that perhaps would gather one more vote, one way or the other. Cause a tie doesn't decide anything.
I'm just scared of the eight.
How about nine?
So, so Mr. Gerald, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, amend the EMC, uh, language, electronic message assigned must remain static and unchanged for a period of less than 15 seconds.
Do I hear a second? Okay, here we go. All in favor of the 15 seconds, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There it is.
Commissioners Whalen and Duran oppose. Motion passes.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's why it passed.
I, I, you know, I, I.
I'm not going to lose sleep over you.
Yeah. I, I, I. I, I, I believe it's so much better than the 15 minutes and the 60 seconds. I will completely agree with the business and the electronic industry is just too long. But based on the stuff that I've read, but, um, now the next is on the whole thing with the corrections that we've made. Do I have a motion to send this proposal with the corrections? To city council?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask for clarifying on, uh, so I think Commissioner Whalen, early on, made the recommendation to not specify the illumination standard and let it be a business decision on the business's part, is that correct?
That's correct.
So then I think the language as it is, because right now it's NITS, is that correct? So then.
There's no, technically there is no proposed text change in front of you to consider on illumination. It was highlighted to bring your attention to it, to have that discussion and direction, but we didn't, we didn't propose to change anything at this time.
So I guess my question then would be, because right now the language in the, in the table specifies no change illumination standard is part of the EMS portion. Do we need, need to specify that, the, the standard whether it's NITS or, or?
Well, we have to specify a standard, otherwise we would not regulate brightness at all. If that's your intent, then you would strike everything. So we have to, your choice is either one or the other or both. If it's both, then we would simply multiply the language in the development code. But you have to have a standard unless you choose not to have any standard at all.
Can we, it would be okay if we kept the, the original standard but said or equivalent? And just, then it can be used. If there is a crossover or a percentage of, then it would be the same thing, just measured differently.
I, I'd be uncomfortable with having the word equivalent because it, in the actual code, I think what the commission is getting at, if, if I can put words in your mouth, is that if you can delegate that to staff between now and the council. To be perfectly blunt, I don't see a lot of concern on the commission in terms of the technical issue of the standards. There's reasons to go either way. I think the, the best reason was to go the way Salem was for consistency, not necessarily because it was better or worse than one standard or the other. But it, in a lot of cases, unless there's a good reason not to do so, we try to be consistent to Salem, make it easier on everybody that operates in both cities. So, um, I'm kind of hopeful that we'll find out where Salem is on the, it got held up for some reason, having nothing to do with NITS or, or standards. It was more policy issues and so their sign code changes just got held up. My guess is that when they adopt something, this isn't going to change. So if we're going to, I think the issue was is the commission's recommendation to be consistent with Salem, as I recall. And if you want us to stay that way, then we'll just take that as a delegation from, from commission to staff.
Personally think that's the best in the long run.
That's, that's fine.
Because we don't want to have to come back and revisit it as, if Salem comes, so. So with that clarification, um, do I here, have a motion with the corrections?
I'll make a motion that we make a recommendation to the council, that we take staff's recommendation on the text amendment with corrections on, uh, sign code, section 2.308.
We want to clarify the, the windows issue that we've discussed. And the electronic messaging at 15.
Correct.
And with the Salem standards as our.
As we figure it out.
Yes, as our guiding light. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you all. It's good discussion tonight on a very difficult subject and one that we want our community in its totality. Both, um, not only our business community, which is our, our, many ways our heart of our community and as well as our residents, happy too. So thank you for the difficult discussion. And I hate you, Nate. No, we love you. Okay, um, new old business, staff report.
So I just want to make you aware of, um, the revitalization project is in full swing. This is going to be different than the last one that you participated in and that was the education outreach where we did the cost of growth interviews that you all participated in. This, we will be, um, asking for your participation in the public meetings. We are scheduling some interviews similar to what we did in the past with citizens focused particularly on business owners. And Jonathan, I'll be talking to you, I need names and I need them pretty quick. Nigel, I want you participating in this as well. These are going to be basically two days, we're going to schedule, um, next, next Tuesday and next Thursday. We have, they'll be basically, we've set aside some time, anywhere between three and eight o'clock to have one hour blocks. It'll be a 45 minute interview that we're asking people to participate in. We have a series of specific questions that we are giving to people so they can review beforehand. Unlike what we did in the other one, we kind of kept it a surprise because we wanted the, whatever. So, um, anyway, that's next Tuesday and next Thursday from between, um, three and eight o'clock is the block that we've set aside. We're going to have, unlike the last time, we tried to group everybody of like minds together to represent that perspective. Now we are mixing and matching. We want basically people to come as, from their different perspectives. Again, uh, we want to hear from the business community as well as citizens. Just trying to think of, have I left out anything? So the April meeting, um, we have, there will be a, there'll be basically a public workshop in April. We have also queued up with our DLCD notice. Shane has put in the, the DLCD notice for our historic structures because of the last, because of little due loop that we just did with the Herbert property and finding out that our ordinance is not in compliance, doesn't adequately reflect the statutory requirements for this process. We have that, we could also do. So you, basically you have a choice for you as to what you want to do in April. And that is, do you want to have, to attend the public meeting, the public workshop as well as our regularly scheduled meeting? Or do we want to, um, do one or the other kind of thing?
Kind of looking at the commissioners, what? I'm retired, I don't. I'm open, but, um, I don't know.
We can go either way. Or do both, I mean, we can do both.
So do we, Mr. Chair, I guess I'd ask, do we have anything on the docket right now of such significance? We need an action item in April.
Well, again, he's scheduled, he has given notice to DLCD about the historic, uh, our historic section of the development code.
Yeah.
But that is not binding, that's just simply the earliest we could have a hearing.
I, I'm inclined to say, let's try to do the public, um, input, excuse me, the public, uh, input.
The workshop?
The workshop.
Remember the dates of that? We'll tell you, we'll tell you the date momentarily.
Any of the other commissioners, aye. Cause we want to get our, you know, from everybody's perspective here, as we have different perspectives, give our input or not.
So it'd be Thursday, the 26th is the, the date we have scheduled. It'll be here, yeah. Uh, I'm not sure of the room. No, I don't think, actually, we would hope for a larger crowd than this room would accommodate. And, and hopefully to have, uh, display boards and other things. So it will be somewhere in the community center.
It's a Thursday night, okay.
That, that, yeah, that's the tentative date. I mean, it isn't locked in yet, we haven't officially announced it yet, but that's kind of the date that we've targeted for the first, and it's called a public event. So it's, it's really intended to engage like everybody. So regardless of whether or not we're having planning commission or not, we were going to kind of twist your arms to make sure you guys would come or, or at least try to. But yeah, so that's, we, we literally just had a conference call today to try to pick out that date and that's what landed, that seemed to work for the consultants and everything. So barring, you know, no changes, that's where we'll go with, but it could possibly move in. We would keep you guys up to speed on that for sure.
Okay. So the bottom line is we'll, next month we'll attend the workshop.
Okay.
Is, and still hold our own meeting?
No.
No.
We'll just have mandatory workshop meetings.
Mandatory in quotes.
Yes.
Cause, cause you will not be there as a body and nor will it be at, nor will it be posted as a public, as your public meeting.
Right. We, in other, other words, the, the April meeting is postponed till May.
Right.
Now it should give enough time to have the historical thing already and.
Yeah.
Any other new or old business?
I think that's all I've got.
Council liaison?
Turn my mic on here, I'm going to hammer everyone to make sure your mics are on because when people are at home, they can't always hear you if you are not eating the microphone. So I'm going to holler at you for that reason. Cause when I watch at home, I can't hear you without my TV blasting. So, um, for those of you that I haven't shared, I will be the new council liaison to the planning commission. Um, our link, council president Parsons and I switch, so she is taking traffic safety and I'm taking, uh, planning. So, so we're not switching temporarily, we're switching permanently. I can share with you that on Monday night, yes, Monday night, we did have our long range, uh, planning task force in preparation for the budget. And so we have our budget meeting scheduled for May 1st and May 3rd. And we have two scheduled this year, so, which is always nice. So I think we're going to complete it in two sessions. If not, we'll go, um, longer and the budget, uh, should be out by the end of April, if not a little bit sooner from Tim, so that will be posted on our website for everyone to see. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Youth. You're, you're on deck, Isaac.
Yeah, um, I can't think of anything to report on.
Thank you very much for your patience tonight and our long discussion. I hope you understand why we went so long in our discussion, so thank you very much. Council representative, I guess I'm on deck for this month.
Good.
Good. Good. Thank you, Nate. Looking around, is there?
So do you have the Civic Center cleanup this Saturday, 9:00 AM, Kaiser Civic Center? Come out, put your gloves on, clean this place up, it's awesome, good event.
Uh, I'm going to see if I can clean just the bike area, can I just do that? Cause I, I want to kind of oil the tools and stuff. Anything else from anybody else? Adjourned.